So everybody's gonna get a pinwheel. Yeah.
Good evening. We do not have a forum for this meeting tonight, so I will not be able to all day. I do have some proclamations to give out. I apologize for all of y'all attending and not being able to speak. I'm sure we'll have this meeting again, hopefully, at some point. I encourage you to all attend again.
Says it all right there. Says it all.
Three things.
I knew Marsh was in on that.
One, two, three.
Yep, exactly. Marsh was in on that. Oh, CR, I knew it.
So if we can have order while the mayor reads the proclamations, we have special guests that are here to receive that. And after that point, it's a public space that you will want to modify. Thank you.
The first proclamation the city has to give out for motorcycle safety and awareness month, May 2024. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country. And whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury and death than a crash on other vehicle drivers. And whereas in the responsibility of all those who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling on the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas urging all citizens in our community to become more aware of the inherent danger of all the operating motorcycle. And for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I have had to share the mayor of the city of Gerald, of Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Gerald. I further urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. Next one. City of Gerald proclamation, Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, April 2024. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe nurturing environment free from abuse and neglect. Whereas child abuse and neglect affect children from all ages, races, and socioeconomic backgrounds. Poising, posing a threat to the well-being and development of our community, community's youngest members. And whereas the city of Gerald recognizes the importance of promoting awareness and prevention efforts to address child abuse and neglect and provide support for families in need. And whereas preventing child abuse requires collaboration among families, communities, and organizations to create safe, stable, and nurturing environments for all children. And whereas the citizens of Gerald are committed to protecting our children and supporting families in crisis through education, intervention, and community resources. And whereas the city of Gerald calls upon all citizens to support efforts to strengthen families and create environments where children can thrive, grow, and reach their full potential by standing together and making a significant, significant impact in the lives of our children and building a community that prioritizes the well-being of every child. Now therefore, I Patrick Sherick, Mayor of the city of Gerald, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in our community. I urge all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, and businesses to join together to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect and work collaboratively to prevent it.
It takes advantage. Say cheese pizza. Say cheese pizza.
Thank you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's grab our stuff. Let's grab our stuff.
The last thing we got here is the city of Gerald proclamation to designate May 12th to May 18th, 2024 as National Police Week. Whereas we recognize and honor the selflessness and heroic service provided by the men and women of the city of Gerald Police Department. And whereas we rely on law enforcement officers to keep our neighborhood safe, enforce our laws, and respond in times of crisis. And whereas everyday law enforcement officers throughout the nation face a threat of violence and danger, routinely putting their lives in jeopardy to defend others, putting themselves at risk of injury, disability, or even death. And whereas these men and women by their distinctive service and dedicated efforts as law enforcement officers have earned our highest respect and deepest gratitude. Whereas the city of Gerald extends appreciation to our own police chief Patrick South, assistant chief Angela Matthews, and all of these city of Gerald corporals and officers for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they serve. Now therefore, be a result, I Patrick Sherick, Mayor of the city of Gerald, further call upon all citizens to observe the week, May 12th to 18th, 2024 as National Police Week. And join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities and their invaluable contributions in upholding justice, enforcing the rule of law, and protecting the innocent that established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all its citizens. I proclaim this the 2nd of April 2024. I think, do thank y'all for coming though.
Good night, Chris.
You can speak, we're gonna walk off just now.
I wish you wouldn't miss it because I would've talked to Danielle anyway. Anyway, I have my three minutes. And I wanted to make a comment or two. My wife and I have been in this city for over 25 years. Way back then, we didn't have a city. Georgetown was crying to absorb and coming this way. That's about the only way they could go was north towards us. And we sat down and we talked with a fuck up of people and we said that we gotta do something to protect our city or to protect where we live so that we might live in a small town and enjoy it. We got out and walked the streets and got the petition, my wife and a couple others walked the streets to get a petition so that we'd have an opportunity to vote to have a city of Gerald. It passed, we established the city of Gerald. Later on, just a couple of years later, we came out with the 4A and 4B sales tax corporation. We walked the streets again because that was money that would come into the city of Gerald and it helped the city of Gerald grow. We've experienced beaucoup of things in the city of Gerald. Most of it's good, we had a few rough times without a doubt. But folks, right now, and we have one of the best city managers we've ever had. And her husband. Certainly, we appreciate you sharing her with us. We need her guidance. She's done nothing but great thanks for the city of Gerald. Look at our police department. We had a lady over here stay with us the whole route, just about the whole trip, I think. But we don't wanna let three people ruin this town. And if it takes, if we gotta get a petition and have them kicked out, then we need to do that. I don't know what procedure is Danielle, but I never dreamed we'd come to this point. But to me, with them not showing up, knowing well that they were gonna have to answer for their behavior to the citizens of Gerald, that tells me I chose to resign. That's the way I read it. And I wanna encourage them to resign. And here is a petition. I didn't even know it was here. But anyway, we got a petition. Y'all hear yourself, heard the feeling comes around? I don't know who gave me that petition. But anyway, I just think we oughta, I wanna make sure you understand what I did with the page you're here. And I appreciate you sharing.
Man, I think you're a little bit overdue today.
You take off the time they came up in the front.
I was surprised it was that.
Well, well, that's a good reason because it's so I wanna have my stay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I could have, I never have an excuse.
Alright, so, yes, alright. I wanna read you because I'm sure we'll never have a chance to do this again. My name is Rusty Bryson, I served on the Gerald City Council for, how many years? Yeah, something like that. It seemed like a lifetime. So, I did it unseverishly, I think I did it unseverishly because I did it because I wanted a better place for everybody to raise their families. And a great place to retire from. David and I retired from Gerald School in 2011. We didn't go anywhere. We're vested here and we intend on staying here. So, this is what I, I just wanna read this because who knows, I might get struck by a card tomorrow. Mayor Sherick and City Council. Here we go again. Rehashing the employment of our esteemed city manager, who, from all I can tell, has gone above and beyond to run the city in a positive manner and within the confines of the law. That's important. She has an excellent reputation from peers, coworkers, and acquaintances from across the state of Texas. Well, except for a few council members who have been against her since the day she was hired. They have micromanaged her, harassed her, and I might add, other city employees have received the same treatment as well. It's as if they don't want her to succeed. They want her and the other employees to fail. Well, let me tell you, failure is not an option with this lady. I've known her a long time. So, she is a professional. She is a professional city manager who strives to have a positive working relationship with all members of Gerald City Council, regardless of personality, philosophy, or positions on specific issues. She will not allow her personal likes or dislikes affect how she interacts with council members. She is a professional, which is more than I can say about some of the council. While I'm not in shock about this issue coming up again, I'm extremely disappointed. Maybe instead of considering the employment of Ms. Singh, we need to consider their position on city council and ask for their resignation. Since the problem is not, since the problem is him and not Ms. Singh. Let me remind you that being elected to city council is an honor bestowed upon you by the voters. Keep that honor in perspective. Citizens view electing you as showing trust in your judgment and representing their interest in community decision-making. They did not elect you because they felt you were personally deserving of special rights and privileges. Don't expect the city manager or staff to be able to assist you in ways outside your formal role on the city council. And by and large, they are required to treat you just the same as any other citizen on matters outside the realm of their official duties. Any compensation and perks of office is not allowed. Our city attorney has said on numerous occasions that individually a council member is without power, but together the council has power. You need to start showing the behavior of a non-corrupt elected official and work together. Do the job the citizens elected you to do. Again, I'm embarrassed by the behavior of a few council members. There are bigger issues facing the city of Gerald. Put your time, attention, and energies into these issues. People wanna be able to turn their water faucet on and know there's water. They wanna be able to flush their toilet and know it will flush. People in Old Town need and deserve good roads and proper drainage. Pay attention to what the citizens of Gerald need and want. You're teaching the young people in our town that you expect to get your way by threatening when it doesn't come your way. That's not how Gerald citizens expect or want businesses in our town to be transacted. Please consider striving to have an atmosphere of respect and cooperation rather than reproach and censure, and remember why you were elected. In closing, I have said this before and I will say it again. Gerald has the best, most counted employees in the state of Texas. Please stop micromanaging and harassing them and let them do the job they were hired to do. Remember, a harmonious collaboration between the city council and the city manager leads to successful governance and better service delivery for our residents. Philippians 234, for those of you so desired to hear. Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather, in humility, value yourselves above others, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interest of others.
Hey, folks, I just wanna make one quick comment. So, the chief of police is not a political position, so I don't play politics. I'm here to serve as well, right?
That's why we hired you.
There you go. But there has been rumors and information that's come to me that there's apparently animosity in the department and our city manager, where she does not support the police department. I don't know if y'all have heard that, but I've heard it from several different people. And apparently it's all over such a meeting. That cannot be further from the truth. Ms. Singh has supported us in every aspect of everything we've done and continues to support us. And the vast majority of officers within the department think that she does a fantastic job, including myself. I just wanted to add that so we can do that for now.
Thank you.
The city council had to leave the guys because it's not an official meeting, but we can stay here and talk if Gerald wants us to.
There you go.
That's where I can't.
I've got my, I have my cards for the racing. Yeah, I actually work with some of my guys. I don't know what page I'm on. There's a guy who was in a car show. He actually wore a hat that he sets up. He had all these pictures of his eyes and boxes.
She worked at her nightclub.
But I can't do for a pass up. But I, I, my mom played ball for a lot of stuff. I'll say this stuff, I mean, that's, we turned it over. We supported their campaign. I was learning much from her.
Chief!
It's the old, not officially called the, the guy who's trying to. My dad went back and said, "Realize that it's a king's of the top."
Now which one?
Not this house.
Did you say?
I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But I said, "Don't you love this little girl?"
Thank you.
Thanks for watching. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. I guess I'm on.
This is not like.
Nice to meet you.
Well, and that's good news. It's true.
Can I take where you spoke to us?
Yes, no, I do think we need it. I watched Water Burger because the traffic happens.
Because you didn't have the data?
But it's happened, they needed it, so they had to.
All right, if you ever get bored, we're hanging. 895. And 487.
I, I did that. I paid my dues. More than once.
Jason Oliver's phone's in here?
All, all.
I don't want to get that out.